I'd like to call this public hearing to order. This is a public hearing pursuant to Illinois Municipal Code 65, ILCS 511-13-3E, regarding my proposal to remove Raymond Lattawig as a member of the Village Planning and Zoning Commission. Clerk, would you please call attendance?
Abernathy?
President.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Very good. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Tonight, the order is that I will make some opening remarks. Mr. Moreno will have a few comments at the end of my remarks, then we'll hear from Mr. Lattawig, at which point we'll have a period for public commentary. And those that wish to speak, we'd ask that you come up to the microphone here and speak there. Then, after the end of public commentary, we'll close the floor to everyone except the trustees and myself for a discussion. I'll make some closing remarks, and then we'll have recommended action to be taken at that time, followed by adjournment. Okay? Ladies and gentlemen, trustees, as represented by the press and apparently by Mr. Lattawig himself, the assumption seems to be that I asked for Mr. Lattawig's resignation simply because he called for accountability of village employees in a letter to the editor he authored that was published in the Daily Herald on December 29th. I want to clearly state at the beginning that calling for accountability of village employees is a fair request from any resident. Mr. Lattawig has a right to do this, and he has a right to his opinion. My request for his removal is not a challenge to his First Amendment rights, as many have assumed and subsequently accused. Tonight, I am asking for his removal because I have lost confidence that Mr. Lattawig can be an effective planning and zoning commissioner due to his now impaired relationship with our village staff, a relationship that requires confidence and trust for the planning and zoning process to operate at the high professional level that our residents deserve. The first part of Mr. Lattawig's letter addresses vacant stores and specifically the closed Wendy's Restaurant. He then suggests term limits for, and I quote, "the hired salaried officials directly responsible for the economic development of our community." End of quote. The implication here is that village staff is directly responsible for the store vacancies, including the Wendy's closure. This is simply far-fetched. This thinking ignores the role of the landlord in his situation. It ignores the workings of the business itself, which may have made poor choices and decisions. It ignores the complexities of the economy and changing demographics, all of which go into a decision the companies like Wendy's make every day. To be sure, commercial vacancies are an issue in our town, particularly within a few highly visible properties, and I am personally in touch routinely with those landlords in monitoring the situation. But we live in a country where the role of the local government is very limited when it comes to a national company's decision to open or close a particular location. The free-market forces rule the day. Later in his letter, Mr. Lattawig suggests, and I quote, "a new team of economic salespeople," and then later, to quote, "who could be rewarded with an extension to their term for bringing in new Mundaline business varieties and filling store vacancies." End of quote. This idea greatly misses the mark. The sales process in filling commercial space occurs between the landlord and the occupying business, not between government and the landlord, or between government and the occupying business. There's a whole industry dedicated to the sales process of filling vacant space. It's called commercial real estate, and there are many local companies that serve landlords and expanding businesses alike. But the most disturbing aspect of Ray Lattawig's letter is that the same people he seeks to replace here within Village Hall are the same individuals with whom he works on a continual basis as a planning and zoning commissioner. Now, this is hugely problematic because the planning and zoning process requires a close working relationship between the village staff and each commissioner. It requires strong communication, trust, and confidence. Now, when a commissioner goes public with his opinion that those staffers whom he works closely with should be replaced, then we can assume there is no longer trust and confidence within that relationship. To keep moving forward, then, would mean a high degree of relational impairment and dysfunctionality. The specific consequences of this impairment would vary over time and with different situations. But eventually, in my opinion, there's a strong chance that it would end up affecting Mundaline residents and businesses that bring petitions before the commission. I'm not willing to take that risk, and as mayor, I feel it is my duty to intervene. I explained the staff-relationship issue with Mr. Lattawig when I first asked him for an explanation regarding his letter, and then later for his resignation. My concern in this regard should certainly not be a surprise to him. Please understand that my request for his removal is not about denying Mr. Lattawig his right to free speech, but instead repairing the consequences of him freely expressing his views. The First Amendment gives him the clear right to say what he did, but the First Amendment does not absolve any of us here from being accountable for our speech. I'm accountable to voters for what I say, as is each trustee for what they say. But what about planned commissioners? Who are they accountable to? That would be me and the Village Board of Trustees. I can bring forth candidates to be approved by the Board for Appointments as commissioners, and I can also bring forth commissioners and ask they be removed for cause in the event they won't resign when asked. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight presents an unpleasant aspect of governing. Weeks ago, I was advised by someone I respect to just let this whole thing go and let Ray Lattawig serve out the last three years of his term and thus avoid this hearing and the negative publicity, to tell our staff to just deal with the dysfunctionality of the situation and make the best of it. Nope. Sorry, that's not who I am. That would be sweeping this under the rug. If another mayor did that, and I were a taxpaying resident who found out, I would be concerned. If I were a petitioner before the commission and found out about this situation going on behind the scenes, I would be very concerned. Taking action and repairing this situation is the best thing we can do for our village and for the taxpayers. Finally, I honestly believe that one of the most business-friendly things we can do as a village government is to have a planning and zoning commission and process that operates at a high level of professionalism and decorum. In my opinion, Commissioner Ray Lattawig's letter to the editor impairs his relationship and ability to work with staff, and thus impairs his ability to perform as an effective planning and zoning commissioner. Later, I will ask the trustees for their concurrence in removing him from the Planning and Zoning Commission. At this point, I'd like for our village attorney, Mr. Charlie Moreno, to please make a few comments about tonight's process.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a serious matter. Normally, when the mayor feels that an official he's appointed should be removed, it's not necessary to have a public hearing. That would be done at a board meeting. However, in this particular case, because it involves a planning and zoning commissioner, it is different. The law, the statute which the mayor cited, 65 ILCS 5/11-13-13E, requires two things to remove a zoning, a planning and zoning commissioner, and that is a public hearing, which is what we're having now, and it also requires that it be with cause. Now, the question is, what is cause? The statute does not define cause. I have looked for cases of the Illinois Supreme Court and the appellate court involving planning and zoning commissioners. There are none that I have found. Consequently, in order to help this board with a definition of cause, I have gone to cases that involve municipal employees who can be discharged only for cause, and there are a number of court cases on that. There is one Illinois Supreme Court case, and I'll give you the citation. It's Mental Health versus Civil Service Commission, 1981, 85, Illinois, 2nd, 547, 55, Illinois Decisions, 560, 426, Northeast, 2nd, 885. And the court in that case reviewed several appellate court decisions and acknowledged this definition of cause. "A substantial shortcoming which renders an employee's continuance in office in some way detrimental to the discipline and efficiency of the service and which the law and a sound public opinion recognize as good cause for discharge." Now, the court went on to say that it is the job of the agency, in that particular case, it was the Civil Service Commission. In this particular case, it's the mayor and this board to determine what cause is. And so, it's in view of that, and I'll read the definition again. "A substantial shortcoming which renders an employee's continuance in office in some way detrimental to the discipline and efficiency of the service and which the law and a sound public opinion recognize as good cause for discharge." Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. That takes us to, Mr. Lattawig, if you wish, you may approach the mic up here. Thank you.
I'd like to say hello to the department managers, the trustees, the administrators, Mr. Mayor, and the residents that have shown up tonight. Thanks for coming out. I'd like to read into the record the email, word for word, that I sent to the Daily Herald on the 16th of December, and it had passed the Daily Herald's credibility requirements and was subsequently published on December 29th of 2014. It says, "Hello, Daily Herald Fence Post. Recently, Mundaline has reviewed and adopted term limits for its elected officials. For all the reasons term limits have been adopted for elected officials, would adopting them for hired or salaried staff be appropriate? On Friday, Wendy's Hamburger Restaurant abruptly closed its stores in the almost vacant Mundaline Common Shopping Center. This new vacancy adds to an alarming trend of vacant stores in our town. How about limiting the terms of hired salaried officials directly responsible for the economic development of our community? Furthermore, can we require all hired salaried economic development officials reside in the community they collect or pay from? Would doing so point out what the Mundaline residents experience for local dining and shopping options during the week and on weekends? Could these hired salaried officials be rewarded with an extension to their term for bringing in new Mundaline business varieties and filling store vacancies? Term limits for hired salaried officials sounds like a good idea. Would a fresh economic development team bring our village a boost in new business acquisition enthusiasm? Imagine having them promote Mundaline and display the effective strategies for new business prospecting and storefront vacancy reduction. Would that jumpstart an urgent need to really get the ball rolling? Would a new team focus on prospecting for and securing new shops and small business opportunities for the vacant plaza circle? Would these new stores and restaurants offer convenience to Mundaline residents? Would these stores and restaurants bring in customers and revenue from neighboring towns? Is funding this team of economic development salespeople a question? How about using the proposed $3.25 million to relocate a creek? Would that money supply sufficient funding for a new Mundaline economic development sales team?" They were my list of questions. They were written by myself, but also from people that had come in to see us, from my neighbors, you know, from friends, just saying, "Hey, what's going on?" So while I was out of town, that came out on the 29th, and my wife called me and said that the day it was released, we had a trustee in our store telling me that they wanted me to resign. I was caught off guard. Realistically, I thought that somebody would look at that and say, "Wow, these are concerns from the residents. These are concerns you have, being on the economic development team. This is a good structure. Maybe we should address those, even one or two of them." I'd like to read into the record the certified letter that I received from the mayor, and that was received on January 16th, and it says, "At the January 26, 2015 board meeting, I plan to call for a public hearing on February 9, 2015, at 6:30 PM for the Village Board to consider your removal from the Planning and Zoning Commission. At this hearing, there will be an opportunity for you to address the board regarding this matter." Section 5, 11, 13, -3E, parentheses, Z, of the Mundaline Municipal Code, 65 ILCS 5/11-13-3, Section E, provides that the appointing authority has the power to remove any appointed member of the commission for cause after a public hearing. I have spoken to you at length on two occasions regarding your letter to the editor, which appeared in the Daily Herald on the 27th of December. I acknowledge your right as a private citizen to openly criticize any village official. However, in my judgment, your letter is an unjustified attack on the staff serving in the Economic Development Department. The Economic Development Department staff also serves in the Community Development Department. To be an effective commission member, it is necessary to maintain a strong, positive, respectful relationship with the staff of the Community Development Department. I believe your comments have caused irreparable harm to your relationship with the Community Development Department staff. As the appointing authority, I am responsible for the individuals whom I appoint as commission members. I am moving ahead with this matter because I do not feel that you can maintain a respectful relationship with the Community Development Department staff or continue to make a positive contribution to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since this matter could not be resolved through your resignation, I am bound by my convictions to take the next appropriate step and call for a public hearing to remove you from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sincerely, Steve Lentz, Mayor." In my discussions with the mayor, I asked if it just simply could be dropped, had nobody ever questioned anybody, and still was able to maintain a working relationship. He said, "No." So realistically, I'd like to stay on track here. This was not an argument between myself and the mayor. It's not a political debate. It's not a personal debate. It is a voice of the community asking for accountability and open communication from our leadership. Our village has room for improvement. I am proud to live here. We have 31,000-plus residents. I travel all over. Gosh, I was just in Portage, Wisconsin over the weekend, and they have a town of 8,000 people, and there are no vacant storefronts. Mundaline's proposed operating budget for 2014 was $57 million. Twenty million of it was budgeted for salaries, pension, and insurance. We have leadership salaries that match the Illinois governor's 177,000-a-year salary. I was hoping for a little better return on the investment. I'm here, as far as, before everybody, I volunteered for this position, and I did so because I wanted to make an impact in the town that I grew up in. I was hoping that on our planning commission meetings, that I would be addressing, or I would be listening to petitioners tell us about a new business that they wanted to move in. Too often, I found us talking about somebody's fence that was a problem, and I understand that that's going to come up, but too few a times did I hear anybody saying, "We've got a nice business opportunity coming, and we want your backing, we want your guidance." Thirty-five percent of our salaries goes to the budget. I think it's a lot. I think we should be seeing a little more from those people that are in charge of economic development in our community. I had a lady from the town of Richmond, Illinois, call our shop, ask for the owner, and I told her I was the person, and she said that they had an opening for a bike shop at the end of their trail, and they would like to know if I was interested in opening a second location. I was flattered, and I told her I'm having enough trouble staffing the shop that we own, but then I said, "I'm a member of the planning commission in our town in Mundaline," and I said, "I would trust that our staff is doing what you're doing, you're calling from your position." And she said, "It's my job." So I brought this to the planning commission, and when I brought it up, one of the responses I got from one of the members I talked to said, "Did you hang up on her?" And I said, "No, she's doing her job. I would think you'd be doing the same thing. That's what we pay you for. I pay 8,000 a year in taxes. I understand it goes to a lot of different things, but there's a lot of towns that pay less that have more." Sports, in our everyday life, teaches us a lot of lessons. It really does. And I just was reading a quote from Mike McCarthy. He's the mayor of an NFL team that he quoted, "Leadership." He says, "I tell the coaching staff," which could be department heads or anybody, "Your job is to teach, demand, and communicate, plug in any three things that you would say their job is, and tell them they've got three responsibilities. And then the players that they talk to have to perform, participate, and communicate. So when one of your three key responsibilities is not at the level it needs to be as the leader, you better have an issue with that." I think realistically, we need a sense of urgency to help fill our vacancies, and that's why I brought it up. I was hoping, again, only just for a few answers, and everything would have been good. How it got from a planning commissioner to right up to the mayor passing all the other salaried staff that realistically are in charge of the departments that I'm part of till tonight, or we'll see what happens, but how did it go from top to bottom without any, you know, interlay? On the way back from our trip, my wife Natalie, she asked me, "What would you like to see happen after tonight's meeting?" And the one thing, I'd like to see us create a specific team to prospect for new businesses for our vacant stores. Instead of saying, I'd like to see a change of how we talk about how we've done it in the past. I would like to hear them say, instead of saying, "We've tried to do that, and it didn't work, let's try," and still come into work thinking that you're going to make a change, let's hear them say, "Well, we tried it before, and it didn't work, but let's try it a different way and position our town for a successful result." How about establishing reachable goals? We heard from the mayor in our "Thanks for Being a Business Owner" at the annual thank-you meeting, that in 20 or 30 years, we're going to see a nice change in our downtown. I was sitting across the table from a guy that was probably in his 70s, and I'm thinking he probably didn't want to hear that. How about a five-year plan? How about building a team that competes against sports? And we can't expect to win the title in one year, but our minimum goal should be to make the playoffs. And then, every year, let's review the progress in the roster annually. In private business, the owner calls you into the office and says, "What did you do for me last year? Am I giving you a raise? Am I giving you a warning? Or am I telling you attaboy, or what?" I'd like to see somebody asking these questions and just, we can make changes to the team as needed, because you know what? We're not saddled with anybody that's here in this room tonight, and if we are, I think it'd be unfair. So if we need to make changes to get our community in the running for Top Community of the Year, let's do it. Thank you, everybody, for listening, for showing up tonight. Thanks to the newspaper. Gosh, I never envisioned this going this far. I never felt, in my opinion, that asking for accountability would suddenly make me unwanted in the planning commission that I've represented for 13 years. You know, Mr. Moreno, you struggle to find a similar case? I mean, have there been similar cases that didn't require removal of a planning commissioner? Did they look at it and say, "Jeez, what you're bringing to the table is something we should address?" It's a roadmap to what the citizens are asking for.
There are no cases.
How about that? But again, thank you, everybody. I mean, if tonight's my final eight, thank you. I was told by one person, they said, "You're going to lose your title. You're going to lose your position." Again, I volunteered for this spot, and I volunteered to do this because I wanted to do what was right for the village, for the residents, for my family. So if I lose my title over this, gosh, at least if I brought it to the forefront and we continue on. I love the fact you're now open up to coffee with the mayor on the first Saturday of the month. That's something that was never done. The idea of having a special meeting last week on the 16th, gosh, it was great. That was the first time that I remember, and I could be wrong, but that's the first time I remember all the commissions getting together and talking about the exciting things that are going on in town. I feel I'm close to the source, having been part of the planning commission, but there were things that you talked about that we didn't even know. And I thought, "Why hide that? Why keep it a secret? If there's something good going on, gosh, share it." Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have the public commentary. Would anyone here wish to address the board? If so, just raise your hand so we get an idea as to how many we have here. We have one there, two, three, four, five. All right, let's start with this side of the room and go that way, all right? So right over here? Yes, sir. Could just please give your name and your address, if you wish?
We don't need the address.
Good evening. My name is Karen Walsh. I live at 504 Midway Drive in Mundaline.
Excuse me. Could you spell your last name for me?
Sure.
Could everybody who comes up, so I don't have to keep asking?
Sure. D-W-A-L-S-H.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of things to say, sort of playing off of what Mr. Lattawig said. I attended the meeting last Monday. My impression of the meeting was it was excellent. I also feel the meeting was reactive instead of being proactive. I feel that that meeting and the coffee with the mayor, though that might have been in the works, would never have happened unless the brouhaha with Mr. Lattawig had happened first. That's my impression. Could be totally wrong. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we're talking about businesses, bringing new businesses, which we want. I attended the sign meeting, ordinance meeting, a couple of weeks ago during the day, and there's going to be a lot of changes with our signs. I don't know why. I drove through Libertyville recently because I had to get up early in the morning to go to the vet, and I look at signs now, pole signs, monument signs, box signs. All of a sudden, I'm looking at signs. But, not that I want to do that, but I asked at the meeting, and I did email Amanda, I can't say her last name, about what signs were going to be okay or not. I asked specifically about these particular businesses that are longtime businesses. Franks for the Memory, it's been here since 1984. The Dairy Queen, it's been here since 1959. Bill's Pizza and Pub, well, maybe not the pub, but it's been here since 19- Bill's Pizza and Pub, well, maybe not the pub, but it's been here since 1957. When I moved here, we would get a pizza for $5, and my parents had to save up for that. Fairhaven Lanes, I bowled there when I was probably a Brownie or a Girl Scout, and that's way too long ago. And Lakeside Lanes has been here since 1974. Currently, all of those signs that are up now are not going to be okay anymore. They're not going to be grandfathered in, they're going to be, they have to go away. Five-year amortization period, which means we're going to maybe get you grants so you can take down your Bill's Pizza sign and put up the okay new sign. I just don't think this is a very cool thing to do to longtime businesses, I do think they should be grandfathered in, that doesn't really work out, but we're talking about businesses, and if you want businesses to stay, you don't slap them in the face and say, "Oh, we're so happy you're here, Bill's Pizza since 57, take down your sign." I don't think there's anything wrong with those signs, and like, I drove through Libertyville, they have pole signs all over, Zanglers, uh, some sort of transmission shop across the street. I'm noticing signs, and I don't see anybody else going looney-tuney over signs. That's all I have to say, and, um, that's it.
Okay, we're going to have a village board meeting after this, at which time we'll also have public commentary for then, you know, there as well. All right? So I would request that the comments now be limited to just addressing the issue that we have going on right now with Mr. Ladawig, okay? All right, next, coming this way.
Evening. Mike Marciniac, 1600 Wakefield Court. Marciniac is M-A-R-C-I-N-I-A-K. I moved to Mundeline in 1993, March. Been here a long time, in my opinion, and quite frankly, I haven't seen any growth. My taxes when I started here were $2,800. Now they're close to $10,000. Can't do it anymore. And I've been here a long time, I'm a longtime resident, put my kids through the school system, Mundeline High School, public schools, and the reason I'm standing here talking to the board and the residents is, I think when I read Ray Ladawig's comments in the paper, I thought they were fair and honest, and I think it was a reality check for everybody. If you go around town like I do, I can't shop in Mundeline much anymore. There's not a lot of stores left for me to shop in. There's a lot of Burger Kings, but as far as other businesses, they're just not there. I go back when there was a grocery store next to the Menards in Oak Creek, that closed right after we moved in, and that place has been vacant ever since. Some businesses come and go. Now the Menards is closed. Dominix is gone, okay? I kind of look at it this way for everybody. There's three corners, there's three points, and it's kind of like the triangle. You got Oak Creek, you have where Target and Home Depot is, and then you have where Dominix is. That's the triangle for shopping for the Mundeline area. And if you look at all of that, everybody here, those businesses are gone, those doors are locked. The Walgreens moved across the street from downtown by the Dunkin' Donuts, that's all been vacant for a long time. So, again, the reason I'm here is, I'm a friend of Mundeline that's probably had it up to here, and we do need change. Whatever the zoning board is, whatever Ray Ladawig was trying to do with his team was probably good stuff. Okay, if you want to make change, that's fine. You have to start with whatever you guys and gals and trustees have been doing for a long time now, in my humble opinion, is not working. Okay? It's that simple. For, for the budget to be at, I think the proposed budget for 2015 is 54 million point eight, and you have a 21 million point four on salaries. I think Ray mentioned the 35% of that budget for salaries. Well, this year, in fiscal year 15, the budget's going to be 38.3% of that goes to salaries. That, to me, is not right. Again, I've been with, in, in this community for almost 22 years, and it's to the point where I'm going to have to do something different. I don't like it, but it's, it's time for myself and my family to reevaluate what we're doing here and probably move. And it's not just me, it's, it's my neighbors, it's people I talked to at church. This, this is a bigger issue than maybe Mayor Lentz and Ray Ladawig, okay? It's about the citizens of Mundeline. I'm not as fortunate as a Ray Ladawig, but I know several of my friends who are Mundeline born, bred, and still live here like a Ray Ladawig, and they're all upset. It's not good. So I'm glad we all came together and everybody's able to voice their opinion, right? And I hope our opinions as citizens of the town of Mundeline are heard by the board. Whatever you're doing, change it, do something different. Set limits, or maybe if you're not comfortable setting limits, set goals that are obtainable, and let's get moving on this economic development for Mundeline, because I believe it's at a critical point. That's all I had to say.
Okay, next, going this way.
Good evening, my name is Doug Cline, last name spelled C-L-I-N-E. I'm going to keep this very short and sweet, because I'm here for a very good friend of mine, Ray Ladawig. I grew up in Mundeline, we moved here in 1964, we went to grade school together. He lives, breathes, and believes in Mundeline. And I heard somebody say, I think it was you, Mayor Lentz, that, "Let's keep it to the issue with Ray." I don't think there's any issues with Ray. I think he's here, and what he does for the village of Mundeline, he does out of his heart and the goodness that he has for the community. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, coming this way. Okay, who else wanted to say something? Over here, let's go right here. There we go.
Jennifer Burk, 1321 Ainsley Court, B-U-R-K, no E. Good evening. After the last time I addressed you from this podium, I'm sure it is no surprise that I am here again tonight to assert that it is my hope that you choose to not remove Ray Ladawig from the position he has volunteered his time to for the last 10 years. At the last village board meeting, I, as other residents that chose to speak on Mr. Ladawig's behalf, shared concern that this hearing to vote for his removal was based on a letter he had written to the paper. Pardon me. I expressed concern that even though it was stated he had committed no ethical wrongdoing, nor engaged in any mis, any misconduct, you, Mayor Lentz, had lost confidence in his ability to effectively serve at the position he has been appointed to by three different mayors. I expressed concern that after he refused to step down after three requests from you, trustees contacted him and asked him to do so. Your statement tonight served only to solidify those concerns. You gave us assurances that the letter that was published in the paper played no part in your seeking his removal. You asserted that the reason there was a memo circulated to the trustees advising them not to discuss the matter publicly, as well as the reason you would not divulge the grounds on which you called for this vote, was to respect Mr. Ladawig's privacy. I don't believe that to be true any more than I believed it to be true two weeks ago. What I do believe is the letter most certainly played a role in the reason we are all here tonight. I admit, I cannot prove that to be true any more than you can prove that it isn't. I am unfortunately left in the position of being unprepared to offer you any type of researched or informed rebuttal to the grounds laid forth tonight, because you have willfully kept them from us until now, and advise this board to do the same. You've managed to buy yourself time to stack the deck in your favor and increase the likelihood that the outcome you seek is achieved. By not adhering to the tenets set forth by this administration of transparency, your silence on the issue has proved evocatory to the residents you serve. Whether the silence on the issue was legally advisable or not is irrelevant. Even the minutes in the video from the last meeting where we spoke in support of Mr. Ladawig are still unavailable on the village website, two weeks after the fact, when the vast majority of them are published within three days. It appears as though these choices were made to keep not only Mr. Ladawig, but the residents that support his continued service to the village deliberately uninformed and less able to intelligently respond to whatever extraneous and extrapolated reasons we were presented with tonight for the vote. What Mr. Ladawig faces tonight is the equivalent of a judgment being handed down minutes after an arraignment. After being awarded the Sunshine Award from the Illinois Policy Institute, you were quoted as saying, "Good government is a transparent government, and advising, and, so taxpayers and voters can make informed decisions. Withholding information and advising other officials elected to represent our interests to do the same seems rather incongruent with the very philosophy and practices that won you this award." At best, it's an irresponsible choice that has led many of us to wonder why such information would be kept from us until the last minute, if indeed there has been no wrongdoing on Mr. Ladawig's part. At worst, it has been a deliberate concealment to give yourself the upper hand in this hearing by rendering us, as well as Mr. Ladawig, impotent for defense due to the lack of time needed to formulate an appropriate and relevant response. What disappoints me most is this feels very much like an exercise in futility, because I suspect each one of you at the front of the room already know how this vote will go. You've all had the distinct advantage of being privy to the details of the situation for weeks, if not months, and I am sure you all knew which way you would vote before you even stepped into the room tonight. If Mr. Ladawig had any hopes of being retained, I highly doubt this vote would still be scheduled. I hope you prove me wrong. Regardless, I remain optimistic because I have faith in several of the faces I see behind name placards tonight. Some of you have inspired a hope within me for this town that I am proud to call my home, where I have faith in the ambassadors elected to represent us to be transparent and forthcoming, fair and objective, and to act in the best interest of their constituents and not upon the personal grievances of those they serve with. Thank you.
Before we go to the next individual, I need to address that. We're not going to let this go. You said some things that just simply, I think, were misleading. I don't know what, you were talking about the letter, I mean, I made it very clear tonight that the letter he wrote to the editor was the reason that we're here, okay? So that was made clear this evening. Now, I did not address the reasons in the press, because I did not want it tried in the media, and that memo was a bit of, I guess, legal advice in a sense, that we wanted to make sure that, that everything was fair for Mr. Ladawig, and we didn't come out and, and, and level those reasons in the media leading up to this. That's fair. It was very transparent, and that we weren't going to let that out until tonight, because we didn't want it to be unfair to him. That's the proper way to do things in these types of matters. And so to, to, to level the, the issue of transparency, I, I just don't buy that at all.
I don't care if you buy it.
And it's not true. That's the thing, you are wrong.
Well, you can say that, I mean, I can tell you that I walk on water, too, but it doesn't make it true.
Well, you, you leveled an accusation, and you, and you stated some falsehoods, so...
That you kept the information private for whatever reason? I said...
Mr. Ladawig knew the reason.
Okay.
After, and you admitted, there were obviously multiple communications with him, and that's what's important, is the communication with him, so it's very clear. And what's also important is that we don't try this thing in the media, back and forth, and, you know, leading up to this evening. That's the right thing to do, and that's what we endeavored to do on our, on my side and on our side.
It just seems to me that...
I can't speak for him.
No, obviously you can't speak for him, but I'll speak for myself here. What it seems like is you wanted to keep it from everybody until the last minute, so we, all these people here that showed up and read, had nothing readily available to offer as a rebuttal. And I guarantee you, I'm not the only...
That's right.
That's, I am right, see?
That's right. It would not have been fair for us to come out in the media and, and, and level those reasons prior to this evening.
You didn't have to come out in the media, you could have said so at the last board meeting we were here at.
No, no. That wasn't the time. This is how things are proper.
Well, I, I think a few people think it might have been the time.
No. I mean, we all want, people like naturally to have information and juicy stuff to think about and talk about, but it would not have been fair in the process. And I absolutely stand by the process that we have taken to arrive at this evening, as unpleasant as it is, and as much as everyone wants more juicy information to talk about, and go online, and go back and forth, sorry, this is the way it's done, this is proper, and it's fair. That's the only way to have done this. So I'm sorry that if, if it didn't, you know, you know, satisfy the appetite for that, but that's not what we're here for. I'm sorry about that.
No, and if you think that I'm here to satisfy my appetite for juicy and salacious or whatever news it is, then, then I'm, I don't even know what to say to that, because if that is what you think I am here for, that's probably what you think a good majority of these people are here for, too. We have other things we could be doing tonight, but we chose to be here, because this is something we care about.
I appreciate that.
Well, I'm glad.
I do, but, but you have to honor my position and the choice that we had to make in staying with a process.
I can honor it, but I can also disagree with it.
And so, so to, to take that process and turn it around and cast it as being in some way not transparent is just not right. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to correct the record in that tonight, we made it very clear that it was about the letter to the editor. I think you stated that it was not.
That's you, that's what you said yourself.
And the letter...
You said it was.
No, I said it, it was.
Yeah, you said tonight, but...
And you said it wasn't.
I got it, guys. Last time we were here, you'd said flat out, "It has nothing to do with the letter." If the video from that meeting was online, I could pull it up and play you your own words. But it's not, it's not available online yet. So if there's nothing else, I would like to take my seat now, because...
That's fine, I'm done.
Me, too.
Next, over here.
Hi, I'm Natalie Ladawig. Okay, I, okay, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees, for allowing the community to speak, and to everyone who came out this evening. I am proud to stand here today and say that I've been married to Ray for almost 25 years. He has integrity, he's honest, and he cares about this community. As a lifelong resident of Mundeline, he expressed his opinion because of his strong feelings and his ties to Mundeline, a town he grew up in, a town we chose to raise our family in, and one that we chose to open a business in. As the mayor stated earlier on, there's a disconnect between the village and the community. If Ray's letter is a means to bridge that disconnect, then it's a optimistic change. We, as a community, have the opportunity to appreciate some of the wonderful efforts the village and trustees are making, and particularly due to the new coffee with the mayor, and even the special meeting from last week, we at least are able to recognize some of the positive changes. And as Ray mentioned, he is proud also to recognize those changes that were discussed at the meeting. Mr. Mayor and trustees, I know that Ray's asked some tough questions, and that there's been a lot of discussion, too much discussion. I have confidence in his ability to serve his community, and that his motivations are driven out of his love for his family and this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Brown, B-R-O-W-N, 1205 Shetland Drive. I'd like to begin by thanking Mayor Lentz for his presentation last Monday evening. He reminded us of the great things we have in this town, like our water and sewer, our parks and park districts, our great location for potential growth and prosperity. Since that... Since that meeting, I've continued my efforts, as I have for many years, to spend as many dollars as I can here in Mundeline. I want to support local business and help create an attractive business environment in Mundeline, and it's important to be optimistic, but it is also important to be realistic and honestly address our shortcomings. Twenty years ago, my husband and I chose Mundeline as the place we wanted to raise our family. We saw it as a community on the move. We chose it not for what it was, but for what we thought it could become. It was a community with great potential. It seemed to be poised to become a wonderful, vibrant, prosperous community. Sadly, if we're honest with ourselves, Mundeline has not yet reached that potential. Too many of our storefronts remain empty. Our high school has failed to meet state standards for growth for seven straight years in a row. We have limited shopping and entertainment options here in town. Our neighborhoods still bear the scars of the recession with too many empty and foreclosed homes. Some of our residential and downtown streets are in bad shape and have gone far too long without proper maintenance. There is no denying that we can and should do better. You said last week, Mr. Mayor, that we should be optimistic ambassadors, and I think that's true. But we must not close our eyes to our shortcomings or close our minds to those who would challenge business as usual, or ask good questions, or offer practical solutions to the problems we face. We need a combination of both optimism and realism if we are to reach our potential. Now, if you put optimism and realism together in one person, you get Ray Ladwig. He sees Mundeline for both what it is and what it could be. He is a man who chose Mundeline as both his home and his place of business. He cares enough to speak his mind, to ask good questions, to offer out-of-the-box thinking, to dream big for our community. Removing him from service would be a mistake, a big mistake. It would be a denial of the realities that we face. It would be a selfish, political move that rejects the voices of all these concerned citizens that have come here tonight to support him. It would be an admission that you're satisfied with mediocre and unwilling or unable to consider different points of view as you attempt to grow this community. I'm here to support Ray, and in so doing, I believe I'm supporting Mundeline. I choose to be an optimist and a realist, and I hope you will, too.
Going this way? Okay.
Terry Schaul, 996, Lou Stern Court.
Schaul coming, please.
Kind of tough to top that one. Not much of a speaker. I've born and lived here since 1952, unfortunately, five years before Bill's pizza even got here. But I've seen a lot of changes in town. I've known Ray about 10 years, and I've never seen a more sincere person looking out for the benefit of this town. And I also think it would be total injustice if he was removed from that planning board. You will not find a more sincere person for this town than Ray. That's all I've got to say.
Tom Harmon, H-A-R-M-O-N, 244 Bingham Court. A resident for 18 years in Mundeline, and thank you for allowing us to voice our opinions. I'm puzzled. Mayor, I just really don't understand your comment that Ray's letter had nothing to do with this. I believe if he had talked to you on the side and voiced his opinion, but it had not gone into print, it had been a conversation between the two of you on the exact topics that were published in the Daily Herald, we wouldn't be here right now. So I think it is absolutely unequivocally, the fact that this was put into print, that is the reason for his removal. And as a Mundeline resident, I'm really, really concerned. I know all of you want to do the best you can for the village. I have no doubt at all. But when someone comes forward and offers some different ideas, you can't push them out. I don't think you want a bunch of people on the board that just say yes to everything. I've been in sales for 35 years. If I don't get my sales, as Ray indicated, I'm in big trouble. I am accountable. Your employees earn a nice salary, and they deserve it, but they have to be accountable. You have to have some accountability. I don't know of anyone in any job whatsoever that is not accountable. I can tell you, living next door to Ray, he absolutely loves Mundeline, unequivocally. And so if he's removed because of a letter that he published, I think it's a huge mistake, and I hope you will rethink it. Thank you.
Okay? Okay. At this point, we'll close the floor and go to the trustees' discussion statements. So we'll have just discussion amongst the trustees and myself. So we'll just go to whoever wants to go first, and trustee Sullivan?
You want to start?
Okay.
You want to start at this end? Right. Well, I appreciate everybody's comments, and I know we were going to get beat up, but you know, we have a perspective that no one else has. We deal with staff on almost a daily basis, and of course, I'd like to respond to some of your comments, but one comment I got to respond to, and this is Walsh.
Yes.
You were driving to Libertyville to go where?
To my practice.
To a doctor of veterinary medicine? You went all the way to Libertyville?
I used to go to your practice.
No, no.
I moved to New York State.
There are two. I'm retired.
When I came back, I bought a pet next to Green Tree Animal Hospital.
Wonderful.
Three sunback mason shots, and I stayed with her. You were giving nothing free.
Well, you are going to some wonderful veterinarians, and they certainly, all of them in Libertyville are fine veterinarians, but there's an issue that everybody needs to think about.
You try to find an embroidery booth in Mundeline, Illinois.
Okay. All right. Well, again, I thank all of those Mundeline residents who've taken an interest in the matter of Mayor Lenz's objection to Ray Ladwig's public letter disparaging the efforts of our development staff recently. Excuse me. I'm thankful because now my colleagues and myself have an opportunity to set the record straight in regard to the economic health of our village and in regard to the past and present actions of Mr. Ladwig. First, I'd like to say we all recognize there have been setbacks in the past in regard to store closings. While we fret and stew while looking for culprits who have caused these closings and vacancies, I can assure you, the real culprits are the corporate decision-makers from far outside Mundeline and those of us who chose not to patronize those stores. In some instances, the failure to fill vacancies in spite of incentives approved by this board is a result of landlords who are unwilling to accept the economic realities of today's commercial rental market. I would ask you to look through and beyond what you see to be setbacks represented by present vacancies and to picture, if you will, the commercial status of every major intersection in Mundeline, from the southeast, 176 and 60, up to round 60 and 17, and well, 45 and 6083 up to the northwest. And in the past 20 years, Mundeline has redeveloped with new stores or in the process of redevelopment plans for commercial uses at each one of these intersections and for most of the commercial space in between. It is a fact that Mundeline's sales tax receipts have increased steadily for the past 36 months, even in the face of three major closings. I believe the growth of Mundeline's commercial base is a result of positive marketing studies by retailers, but also the effective efforts of our planning and our building staff. What about our friend Ray? We are here tonight in regard to our friend Ray and the great surprise he presented with his letter. A huge surprise to me. I say that because I can't understand how a member of the Mundeline Plan Commission could be so far off-base in regard to the commercial condition of our village and the performance of our staff. Some may not agree with my thoughts on Mundeline's commercial health. You may feel Ray should have the same freedom of expression that any citizen is granted. However, the honor of being an elected or an appointed official is not a coat that can be removed and taken off and discarded at will. Ray is a member of the Mundeline Plan Commission, and his public statements regarding Mundeline will always be heard as statements from a member of our village organization. And while all of us before you, both staff and elect officials, have expended untold time and major resources, your tax dollars, aimed at new commercial development in Mundeline, Ray has, without apology, publicly eroded those efforts with his letter to the editor and his statements thereafter. You may ask, is this Ray's only offense, the letter? I'm sorry that, in my view, it is not. One example I could offer you should be taken with consideration of Ray's recent statement that he believes village staff should be required to live in Mundeline, where they would have to suffer under the same lack of shopping and dining opportunities that are suffered by Mundeline residents. That's what he said. Yet, in the past, while considering the Plan Commission's motions to approve 700,000 square feet of shopping and dining opportunities in the proposed development on round 60 across from Target, Ray cast no vote. Three times, he cast that vote. In casting his votes, Ray voted against a Kohl's department store, a Dick's Sporting Goods, a Walmart. He voted no to our vacant Menards moving to this new location. With his no votes, he voted against many outlawed stores and restaurants, and he voted against numerous inline stores which would have joined these anchor tenants, and he voted against the stimulus the traffic from this development would have provided to the Target Shopping Center directly across the road. And incredibly, with his no votes, he voted against a minimum of $5 billion a year in sales and real estate taxes to our schools, our park district, our library, and our village. Now, folks, I can only guess what would lead Ray to vote against the creation of major improvement in shopping and dining opportunities in Mundeline, and then accuse village staff of failing to create these opportunities. But he surely cannot have it both ways. He cannot vote against a retail development in town like Mundeline Town Center and then condemn Mundeline's staff for failing to bring businesses to town. That said, I know, like all of you, Ray is a good guy. Like all of us, I know he loves his wife, his family. He loves Mundeline. He values his friend, and he is valued as a friend. When my chainsaw lawnmower needs service, if you'll let me in, I'll be his customer. But I agree with the mayor. As a result of his past and present actions and statements, it will be difficult for Ray to work with village staff, whose image he has inaccurately and unfairly belittled. And I'm sorry to tell you, I will vote with the mayor to remove Ray Ladwig from the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Anyone else?
Are we just going?
Okay, let's go down this way. Very good. Trustee Kim.
I don't have a lot written up like trustee Sullivan does. You know, to be honest, when the letter first came out in the Daily Herald, I read it and went, wow, that's pretty pointed, but I didn't really think anything further of it. I was surprised to see the meeting called. I also have a copy of the letter that Mr. Ladwig received, and it was regarding the letter to the editor. I have a couple of slides from the Freedom of Speech sessions that I attended at the Illinois Municipal League Conference that the village of Mundeline sends me to every year, and year after year, that's the session I attend. One of the first slides states, "Freedom of speech is usually implicated when an employee makes a critical or negative statement about the municipality or supervisor. And for freedom of speech to be protected, employee must (a) be speaking as a private citizen and (b) on a matter of public concern." On that letter to the editor, he did not state that he was a plan commissioner, so although it was pointed and it was egg on the face, I really thought that, in his capacity as a resident, this is something any resident could do. An example of protected citizen's speech, another slide from that presentation, was teacher's letter to the editor criticizing the school board who employed her. That sounds very, very similar, although not exactly the same. In the introduction slide, it said, "Over 50 years ago, the U.S. Supreme Court declared that citizens did not lose their First Amendment rights by accepting public appointment or employment, and that freedom of speech, criticism of municipal employer, its policies, and of practices." I mean, these are all slides that were covered that day. It's not easy for me to squeak this out, but just a few bullet points I wrote, you know, as we can all attest, including our own attorney and the mayor, he didn't do anything illegal. I'm a little bit confused because, you know, it was sort of put out there that we had a lot of like back-talking or like, you know, talking behind the curtain and the ability to wage judgments beforehand, but there's a lot of new info I'm hearing today, and honestly, I didn't talk to anyone, so I went by what the newspaper said, and I'm hearing a lot of new testimony, which, you know, I've not been involved in many hearings, so I, if this is about the letter, then I'm not sure if the reasonings that go back in history are also included in like a letter hearing. I would say that if that was the case, then, you know, he was up for renewal a couple of months ago, and that this all could have been brought up at that time and he just not be renewed. Hold on one second here, I'm sorry. I'm getting mixed up with other things that I'm doing. so if this is about the letter, then I'm not sure if the reasonings that go back in history are also included in, like, a letter hearing. I would say that if that was the case, then, you know, he was up for renewal a couple of months ago, and that this all could have been brought up at that time and he'd just not be renewed. Hold on one second here, I'm sorry. I'm getting mixed up with other things that I'm doing. So, okay, I'll put that down, the slides. From a marketing standpoint, I do see where we could be more proactive. I read that letter to the editor, and really what came to my mind was, you know, Mundeline's doing a lot, though, and the mayor brought up a lot of it at our Committee of a Whole, which was really like a pulse on the village, State of the Union. In fact, this was a good outcome that came out of that letter, was the fact that we had that meeting, and I hope we do that, you know, every year or at least twice a year. Because, you know, to be honest, one of the things that I ran on was the fact that Mundeline does a lot of great things, but people just don't know it. There's like a misunderstanding or communications barrier. And from a marketing standpoint, I agree with you. This is something that we need to work on, and I would have probably taken that as an opportunity, this letter, as a, hmm, you know, we should probably do something to communicate better, because some of these things in the letter aren't true. Some of them, you know, I've heard from other people in the village, and some of them, I've even heard from, like, people up here during public meetings. But we have to be, you know, consistent with a message and put it out there. So, all that to say, I think the situation was handled a little more dire than I would prefer. I do know Ray Ladawig as well. I've volunteered with him at many things. He is a Commission member, and right when that letter came out, previous to that, we had voted to do term limits on Commission members. So here you have someone in the Commission who's frustrated, right? And they have ideas that they think aren't heard. He's getting calls from another town. He's just like, that's it, I'm writing a letter to the editor. And I just personally felt that he did that as a resident. What I would like to discourage is a precedent that people cannot speak out against their government, that they, you know, don't have the ability as residents to say things like this. You know, and most recently, you know, even when trustee Meyer went to the Plan Commission meeting as a resident and received some blowback for that, I just want to make it clear that, you know, we should not set this type of mood where if you say something against your government, that you will be, like, harshly reprimanded for this, because it is your right, you know, and it is the people who hold the government accountable. So I'm squeaking that out, but that's all I have to say, and I will vote to retain Ray Ladawig.
I'll get there. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you all for coming. I wish that we could have board meetings attended like this every two weeks. I also want to say that I feel very sad that, in our effort not to prejudge Ray and in our effort to protect his reputation and his privacy, we didn't say anything in advance that somehow got construed. And I wasn't here two weeks ago, I was out of town when you all spoke, but I, so I don't know what happened then. But I feel really badly that in our effort to protect Ray and his privacy and his reputation, that some people somehow think that something, that we were doing something other than what we thought was trying to protect him. So I feel badly for that. That said, I'm approaching this from an entirely different direction. I don't know, maybe I'm simple, but to me, this is not about the pros and cons of our economic development. Clearly, we need to do better with economic development, and we're working on it, but that's not what tonight is about. This isn't a forum to promote or talk about different policies. This is, tonight is about Ray. And it's also not about free speech, because clearly, we live in America, and you can say whatever you want. To me, tonight is about a 13-year volunteer for a community that, in my opinion, doesn't really understand his roles and responsibilities. So, again, this is from my point of view. Imagine that you, at your place of work, had a 13-year employee whose performance placed him sort of on the employment bubble. He's a nice guy, he's a really big-hearted guy, everybody likes him, so his boss decides to give him another chance. The boss talks to this employee, talks to him about his performance expectations, the employee agrees to try harder, to focus on fulfilling his job descriptions, and to take some additional training. The boss went to bat for him, and the boss further goes to the other hiring managers and says, you know, he's going to do a better job, we're giving him more training, he'll get his role. Okay? So everybody gives him another chance. And a few months later, the employee, for whatever reason, decides that he doesn't like the way the company, and particularly his division, has been running, and instead of talking to his boss or his boss's boss, he decided to write a letter to the newspaper publicly stating his dissatisfaction. Now, to add to the trouble, the letter contained several factual inaccuracies that people in the company realized that if he understood the company and his job, he would have known were incorrect. Tonight, he expressed surprise that his letter went right to the mayor, but imagine the mayor's surprise when, having gone to bat, he doesn't get an opportunity and it goes straight to the press. So to me, whether he identified himself as an employee in the letter is immaterial. No boss would keep such an employee. What employee, when given an opportunity to resign under those circumstances, would refuse and instead ask for a public firing? In my mind, tonight is about performance and judgment. So I understand that we aren't talking about an employee, but rather, we're talking about a volunteer. A volunteer that has a lot of heart and has a lot of meaning to us in the room. But there are a lot of volunteers that are separated from an organization for cause or due to a difference in vision and style. I don't know of any that, when asked to leave, refuse and demand a public hearing, especially knowing that they have been spoken to previously about their subpar performance. That Ray thinks that his position is arguable or that having a public airing is appropriate shows me that after 13 years, he doesn't really understand what a Commissioner's role is. Though Ray professes his love for Mundeline, his behavior is definitely detrimental to our community in this instance. Ray has encouraged people to believe that he has somehow been wronged, and that this is about the mayor not allowing for a difference of opinion, which, by the way, I would have been silenced a long time ago if that were true, let's face it. So, it's not true. This is about a really nice guy that continues to let his emotions carry him away. This is about Ray being unpredictable and unprofessional in carrying out his job. He is an appointed volunteer whose behavior has become, in my opinion, too disruptive to the process for him to continue. I think that Ray has a lot to offer our community. I think that he loves his family. I think he loves his community. I think he's a good business owner. I hope that he will continue. I hope that he can offer help to us somehow in the future. But in this instance, I do think that he has become disruptive and that his behavior meets some idea of cause that is in my mind, and I will vote to support the mayor and our village by voting to remove Ray tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go next.
Okay.
Well, first off, I've known Ray for, I'm just going to say, 40 years. I think it's more. Went to grade school together and been friends. I'm a customer. Seen any little kids here. The two of us are the two guys that tag-team and volunteer for Santa's Cottage, too. So it's Ray or Ray are the guys in red. On December 29th, I did stop in to Ray's store. I had just had my knee replaced, and Ray's letter aggravated me enough that I got up and had my wife take me to buy a cane, and I stopped in, and he wasn't in. He was up snowmobiling. So I told his wife that I was here, and it was just about the letter that he wrote. She, you know, was a little surprised, and I said, I'll catch him next time. I came back on January 10th, and there was a little break in the action, Ray didn't have any customers there, and he and I went in the back room where he works, and we had a conversation, and my exact words were, "Ray, I'm here to respectfully request your resignation from the Plan Commission." I had talked to the mayor, and the mayor knew that I had been friends with Ray for a long time, and I felt Ray deserved the courtesy of a face-to-face visit rather than a certified letter, a Facebook mention, a fax, police department dropping off a letter. I figured, I'm a friend, he's a friend, I'm going to give it a try and see what happens." And I went, after I asked this, you know, he obviously didn't agree with me, and I said, "Ray, you can't be on the team." I said, "You're on our team here, and you can't take a flamethrower to other members of the team." I said, "If you're going to be complaining, you ought to complain to the people who those staff members work for, me and the elected officials. The buck stops here. We are the decision-makers." And I said, "Ray, if you would have wrote your letter criticizing the elected officials, there'd be no problem. I've been doing this 20 years. I've been the subject of many a letter to the editor. Facebook blast away. I get it, that's part of the territory." But it was going after the staff and the very staff who is the representative to the Plan Commission. So that's the group he works with. We talked for a while, he got busy in his store, and I left. You know, he, I didn't want to disrupt his business anymore. I called the mayor up, and I said, "Mr. Mayor, I tried, and do what you got to do. I don't want to pile on anymore with Ray, but I absolutely will vote to have him removed from the Plan Commission." Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to say a couple of words. I really wanted to hear everything that was going to be said tonight. For me, that was going to be my biggest decision, and I don't believe it has anything to do with First Amendment rights. Mr. Ladawig has every right to write the letter that he wrote. As trustee Kim had stated, just because we're representatives and elected officials, that does not forego our First Amendment rights. However, like trustee Semple had said, if your letter had have been criticizing us as elected officials, I get blasted on the Internet daily. So I have gotten a thick, thick skin. But you did, you criticized the staff that you need to work with. You know, a couple summers ago, I had to buy a bike, and you're, that's where I came. I came to you, didn't go anywhere else. I have to get my daughter a bike. I still plan on coming to you to get her bike. I was hoping tonight to hear you say something that would make me say he needs to stay in his position. But I know you have sincerity and love for this town. I do, too. We all up here have love for this town. But I think that we've now got an issue of, as the mayor had stated, it's a confidence issue in working with the very people and very staff that you have to work with. So I, I'm sorry, but I have to vote to remove.
Okay. Trustee Meyer.
Yeah, thank you. I have about five or six short points. I'm going to start off, I did not ask Ray to resign, nor did I contact him at his business or his home, and as much as Ray deserves his day at court, I think that our time could have been far better spent on a lot of things more important to the village than what we're doing right now. It also, my first point is, this isn't just about Ray. It's also about what we're doing to our other volunteers, our lack of competence in some of our volunteers. There are actions that have been taken on the ability to be a part of a commission, whether you're joining it or staying on it, on different things, on different impacts. If you post a silly picture on social media, you might not get assigned to a commission. If you aren't on the same page as our leaders, or if you say something critical, it could jeopardize your position on one of our commissions. I think that's a problem. I think that's something that needs to be looked at. Another point, if you're a part of government, it doesn't matter whether you're hired, elected, or appointed. The general public is going to criticize you. We get criticized all the time, and it doesn't matter whether it's us sitting up here, whether it's people that are hired for the village, we're part of the government. We get criticized. That's something that if you don't have thick enough skin to be able to deal with that, then maybe you shouldn't be working with the government. It's one of the things, you know, we all know, you know, elections are rough, we say horrid things about each other all the time. It's something that you have to get over. We all work together. We need to work together, even when the public criticizes us. Third point, I'm all for portraying our town in a good light. We should focus on the positive, but we also have to be told what's wrong. We have to be told what isn't working in our town. If we don't know the negative, then we don't know what needs to be done and what needs to be fixed. Our residents should be comfortable and not criticized for telling us what isn't working for them. My fourth point is I fully support Ray and his right to exercise freedom of speech. I find it interesting that Holly Kim and I were the only trustees that attended the Illinois Municipal League presentation on your First Amendment rights. And I also have, you know, and one of the things that, while it related to government and its employees, I specifically asked the question, "Does that also apply to elected officials and people that are appointed?" And they assured me that the same rights did apply. Some of the, you know, I also had some excerpts from the presentation. As Holly mentioned, over 50 years ago, the U.S. Supreme Court declared that citizens do not lose their First Amendment rights by accepting public employment. Public employers cannot retaliate against employees for exercising their First Amendment rights. And remember, employees also means elected or appointed officials. Public employers cannot coerce employees in order to prevent them from exercising First Amendment rights in the future. Freedom of speech is a frequently litigated, protected activity and is usually implicated when an employee makes critical or negative statements about the municipality or a supervisor. But not all critical statements about the municipality or supervisors are protected under the First Amendment. For speech to be protected, the employee must be speaking as a private citizen on a matter of public concern. Last year, when I utilized my rights for freedom of speech, I was publicly chastised. However, our own attorney basically said, while he hadn't seen it done in his career, exercising my freedom of speech rights was legal. However, he recommended that comments were better served when in writing on a letterhead. Ray's letter to the editor was in writing, no title was used, and newspapers don't use home addresses, they only use names. So he satisfied that criteria. When, you know, several people have mentioned past transgressions, I'd ask, where is the paper trail? You need to keep good records of past transgressions. What happened? When? Where? And if the employee was properly informed of- What happened, when, where, and if the employee was properly informed of transgressions, repercussions, and was it properly documented? Also, from that same presentation, it says, "Keep good records. Timely, document poor performance or other reasons that would justify adverse employment decision." I'd like to see those records on those past transgressions. I will vote to keep Ray in his position.
Anyone else? We're good? All right. Before we get on to the recommended action, I just want to thank everyone for attending. This is great attendance, and it speaks to the strength of our village that we have so many concerned residents here. So again, thank you for attending. I'd like to now, let me make sure I get this right, ask for a motion from one of the trustees, and then a second, to concur with my proposal to remove Ray Ladawig from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that the right motion?
Well, that would be a motion at the Board, but what you're doing now is just getting a recommendation for action to be taken at the Board. That's the motion that you would bring up at the Board when you make your...
Okay. So this is just a motion to recommend?
Yes.
Motion to recommend at the Village Board Meeting to, a concurrence with my proposal to remove Ray Ladawig from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion for recommending the removal of Mr. Ladawig.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Voss. Any further discussion? Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
No.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
No.
Then if I had to vote, I would vote yes. So, that takes care of the action. We will adjourn and then take a good five minutes, at least, for, before we start with the Village Board Meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Abernathy. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you.